Any further discussion? All those in favor? Thank you. That brings us to our first public comment. Our first public comment is fifteen minutes. If you have a comment, please step to the podium. Go once, go in twice. No real people here. They're all participants tonight.
Everybody else is enjoying the weather.
Yep. We have no public hearings tonight. Reports of committees. The BCTV committee is meeting next week, I believe. So we'll get their report on the next one. And I have nothing from the Envision Berwick. I am gonna start participating in Envision Berwick again. They're gonna be meeting on this Thursday. Hoping with all the other meetings we have going on on Thursday afternoon that I can make that one. We have no department reports tonight. Appointments. We have Linda Corliss, who wishes to be appointed to the MSAD sixty Board of Directors for a three-year term. Linda, please.
Hi, good evening. Okay. Like I said, CEO. My name is Linda Corliss. I live currently on Knox Lane. I am a lifelong resident of Berwick. Grew up here. Corliss family's been around for a long time. I graduated from Noble High School in nineteen eighty-eight. I went to school, remained here, raised my daughter here, who also graduated from Noble High School. I have a strong belief in community engagement and citizen participation. Currently, I am the treasurer and member of the Barack Historical Society, which I enjoy very much. I am an active member of the John F. Hill Grange and the Sanford-Springvale Rotary. All organizations that I think foster community involvement. Professionally, I'm just trying to give you... They asked me to give you a quick background of me. So professionally, I have an associate's degree in criminal justice. I have a bachelor's degree in liberal studies with a concentration in human resource management. And I am currently enrolled in attaining my master's degree in public administration. Professionally, I have been employed in the field of human resources for fifteen-plus years, both in the private and public sector. The last five and a half years, I've been the HR director for York County Government. So I've been working in the municipal field. Gives me a little bit of a background on municipal budgets, union negotiations, and I think collaboratively communicated and working with various departments and outside agencies, which I think will all be beneficial for this particular position. I believe the combination of my education, my social commitment, and my community involvement makes me a good candidate for the school board and my desire to volunteer for three years. I thought it was one, but three years is good. I'm a firm believer in looking at each student as an individual. I was talking earlier with somebody and I said, you know, you put a community through the school, students through a community school, but each student, you have to sort of look at, how do you financially balance the fact that some kids are gonna go on to... and need to be educated to go on to high-end colleges. Others need to go on to vocational, others are going in the military. And then there are those who just need that basic education and who are going to go on... and they're gonna be your store manager for the rest of their life. All reputable, good careers. And so you've got to balance that. And my goal is to be supportive of the superintendent and the rest of the school board in trying to balance, you know, financial sustainability, because again, budgets are a big thing, and the quality of education that are coming out of our town. Be happy to answer. Again, I just gave a real brief snapshot, as I was told to. But any questions that anyone has, I'd be happy to answer for you.
Just one question.
Sure.
Why didn't you run on the ballot for the school board?
Good question. I actually just have been considering it. My Grange, I used to belong to Riverside Grange in Lebanon, and it closed recently. Lack of participation. So the Historical Society, I kind of really wanted to get into that. We're a small group, but I think we're a good group. And I talk a lot about getting involved in my community, in my town. And the experience that I have with county government, I actually was talking with the county manager. And he said, "So where do you want to go? What do you want to be involved in?" And I said, "You know, I don't have a student at the school." But it was a really, really important one. My daughter was going to school. It used to drive her crazy, because she was a B/C student. But I went to every single parent-teacher conference and all of those things, and she used to roll her eyes and say, "Why?" I said, "Because I need to be involved. I don't need to be that thumb and a teacher. I just want to communicate, be involved." And so when I was talking with him, he said, "You know, Linda, you really ought to... if you got an interest, you really ought to run for the school board." At the time, it's right around, we were just finishing the budget process. The election was coming up. I wasn't really familiar with the process. So when I inquired originally, I said, I think I sent an email to you and to Patty just saying, "What is it I need to do?" I wasn't sure if I needed to run. You know, how do I get involved? And they, well, unfortunately, the election's just passed, you know, but we... but nobody... I put my... well, I put my name on my ballot. I voted for myself, I'll be honest. And that's what, when I wrote my name on there, I said, "Jeez, I wish I had known. I would have ran. I would have spoken about, you know, why I want to be on the school board." So that's when I decided to send the email and say, "Well, what is the process? You know, if I want to do it in a year from now?" And then they said, "Well, you don't have to wait a year. Why don't you come on in and talk to the Board of Selectmen?" So that's why I'm here. And that's why I just... I missed the election.
I appreciate your willingness to serve. I do have a procedural question for this type of thing, because I don't know. Do we need to put it out to widespread to say...
No.
We're considering somebody or just waiting?
Because nobody ran, and there was nobody on... I guess there were quite a few write-ins, but everybody got one vote.
Right.
If I had known you were running, I would have written your name. You would have gotten two votes, and it would have been a moot point. And since she's not filling in the remainder of somebody else's term, it's our understanding that we can appoint her to the full three-year term.
Okay. It wasn't the appointing to the three-year term. It was more, do we have to put it out and get solicit?
No, because we did that with the initial nomination papers and things, that we went through all of that, and nobody took advantage of it, that now we know we can do the appointment.
I do appreciate your willingness to serve. Glad somebody was willing to step up.
Yeah. I move that we appoint her to the school board.
For a three-year term.
For a three-year term.
We're not gonna let you get away easy.
I will second that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Thank you.
No, thank you. We appreciate it.
Welcome aboard.
And I just want to take the time that, you know, we also have other unfilled positions, you know, on different boards, whether they're, you know, full board members or alternates. So if other people are interested in becoming involved in the town, there are opportunities. So thank you very much. Andy Buckman is not gonna be here tonight to talk about the new sign. And that brings us to our MS four stormwater project. And if you give us a couple of minutes here, we'll get out of your way, and you can set up the projector.
I feel like I'm fighting the mouse. Is there a remote going on?
Well, you can use the mousepad. Let me see if I can... Oh, okay. Thank you. See if that... I think it's still skipping around. Try that.
Still skipping.
Still did it draw? Cursor?
Yeah, the cursor, it's like it's jumping left and right and clicking around on its own.
All right, so maybe you better try the mousepad.
Well, that does the same thing.
It's doing the same thing.
Well, that's a little bit better. Maybe I can... I don't know if I...
Where are you trying to get to?
I'm just trying to get to the Adobe that was up in Documents.
Okay.
Is there a remote desktop on this right now?
What I'm thinking is, is try, it's pulling from... No. Oh, I'm sorry. How's that? This is what you want?
Yep. And I'll just switch documents from there.
You get rid of that. It should be next.
I can't click, because the mouse doesn't work. All right. See, now it's randomly moving the document. Sorry, I'll try it. All right, so I just want to introduce myself. My name is Jason Reddy, and this is Peter Howell with Mylona McBroom. We were tasked with doing a stormwater project. This is kind of the end of phase one for the conceptual portion of it. And if I can make it go, I'll just, just kind of as a really brief introduction. It was kind of a two-part to the project. So it's taking care of the stormwater outfall. I think it's double oh seven. And the other part was kind of redoing the road. And I think through the process, we've kind of settled on having a reconstruction of the road, but I mean, that's for your consideration and decision tonight. But the other, only other part of the project that I kind of want to introduce right now is the, kind of the second bullet under project objectives, which was provide aesthetically pleasing, safe, and environmentally friendly stormwater solutions. Yeah, see, this is... I'm not even touching anything. See, he's just jumping, he's jumping around on its own. So the point here is, it's not just taking care of the stormwater, but because of the location on Molton Street, which is next to the town's property where there's kind of envisioned to have a park, we wanted to have a... well, I mean, as it says, an aesthetically pleasing design that would not take away from any future uses of the property. With that introduction, I'll hand it right back over. I'll hand it back over to Peter, who's gonna kind of go through the project so far, some of the decisions that were made, and then end with, you know, his decision and guidance from the Select Board on how we're gonna move forward with the concepts from phase one.
Yep. Thanks. If you can, if it works, throw the plans up there. If not, I have hard copies that we can...
I'll do my best. It's got a mind of its own. Oh, I did okay.
So I guess Jason got it. Looks good. So Molton Street, as you're probably aware, is in a pretty bad shape. The existing conditions, the, all the pavement's cracking. The soils underneath aren't great. We haven't done any exploratory digging or anything like that to see what the actual subsurface looks like. That would be part of the actual design phase of things. But based on our recommendations and kind of agreement with everyone on staff, we're planning on moving forward with full-depth reconstruction of the road. So what that means is, we would be taking off the pavement, removing all the gravel underneath, and building new. We have had discussions with the Water and Sewer Department. Their existing infrastructure is in relatively decent shape, so at this time, they don't have any plans to improve any water or sewer. But as part of the project, in conjunction with the stormwater outfall, we would be installing new subsurface stormwater conveyance pipes. That would lead to the outfall. Part of the town's MS four requirements is... Do you... Can we just shut that off? It's fucking me. Sorry. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna go to the hard copies, because it's just jumping around and kind of need to focus each concept. So what we were tasked to do with the outfall is kind of come up with different outfall concepts to treat the existing stormwater for the area. It's gonna meet the town's MS four stormwater permitting, and it's also gonna meet chapter five hundred, DEP chapter five hundred, stormwater water quality treatment, treatment requirements. So in doing that, we looked at a couple of different ways on how we could do it, what we'd be doing. We looked at the drainage area and built limits of extents for not only the full-depth reconstruction of the road, but also what area of stormwater runoff is actually flowing into this outfall and what we need to treat, how big and how to size the system, how we're gonna convey everything. So part of that, we're going up Copeland a little bit, kind of picking up all the stormwater running down Copeland. These dashed black lines are gonna be subsurface stormwater conveyance, which will be collected via new shallow roadside swales. So as part of the roadway reconstruction, we're gonna be formalizing some shallow grass channels along the road. Right now, there's just some kind of informal paved swales. So we're gonna be formalizing it. The grass provides better treatment per chapter five hundred standards. It also slows the velocity down compared to pavement. If you have water running over grass versus pavement, it's gonna be a little bit slower. Once it gets into the pipe though, it will move. So back to the limits of extents. We're gonna be starting in Copeland, doing a small section of Second Street, and then the majority is along Molton Street, with the leg of First Street being picked up by a new stormwater pipe. So the water kind of all flows towards the river, collected via new catch basins and stormwater pipes. And then on this section, kind of flows down here. I'm sure you guys are aware of the existing conditions, but there's a pretty steep hill right there that we're gonna be looking at. We haven't formalized any finished grading, but we're gonna try and make it better. I know some residents have expressed some concern. So we want to take a look at that. Part of the section of Molton Street along the future park area, we are providing new, six new parking spaces and a new sidewalk that will connect the future park. There's an existing path, and I know there's plans for a potential bridge to cross the river, so we're gonna maintain connectivity to that path. And if the park does develop and they do some trail network or something, the sidewalk will provide connectivity to that as well. So the stormwater, water quality stuff, we looked at a couple of different options. What we're presenting tonight is kind of two different options. There's a two A and a two B. What we'd like for you guys to decide tonight, or after you discuss it, is kind of give us a choice on what you want to move forward with. We've talked to town staff. We kind of have their opinions on which way they'd like to move forward. But you guys will ultimately need to tell us which way you guys like. So the first one here, I'll show you the pretty picture first. So this is the corner of Molton Street. Right now, there's kind of an existing outfall there. What this is, it's called a focal point system. It's a proprietary structure, so waters... Water enters in through the underground stormwater conveyance pipes into kind of a level web spreader area. And what that does is, it removes all the sediment that could have been trapped within the pipe or flushed sand from salt trucks or something like that. And so this level web spreader kind of acts as a sediment trap, so it doesn't clog up the actual water quality treatment area. So the water quality treatment area, it's gonna be depressed about eighteen inches, so there will be a little bit of a detention area. But really, what the purpose is, is to provide the water quality treatment. So when water enters and flows into the treatment center, it will infiltrate into the sand, and it gets the infiltration through the sand, particles, phosphorus, nitrates, kind of binds to the sand similar to a vertifilter almost. So you're getting water quality treatment through there, and then there's some detention underneath the system with these chamber boxes, and then will outflow into another level web spreader, which kind of acts as, to reduce energy prior to water discharging over the bank and into the river. So that's option number... The second option is kind of two A and two B. So the water quality treatment is the same, the outfalls. We just provided two different outfalls to kind of integrate into the park differently. So the water quality treatment is via a modular wetland system. What that is, is kind of a precast concrete box with that sand media that provides the treatment within the box. We're collecting it, there's gonna be two different systems, kind of the north-south section, Molton Street, and then the larger east-west section would go into two different boxes. There'd be underground piping that gets conveyed into a drainage manhole. And then this is where the two options kind of differ. This one enters into a level web spreader, and then kind of gradually flows via a shallow channel to convey into another level web spreader. The purpose of this, or the difference between that one and this one, is there's less underground piping. You are exposing the water, so you have a kind of more natural feel to blend in with the park. This one kind of collects the two systems into one, and then you'll just have one pipe to one level web spreader. So this one has the minimal impact of all of them, as you can see. Both, or all of them, provide the water quality treatment. All end within a similar level web spreader prior to discharging over the bank. We met with the park committee in a butters. Unfortunately, most of the park committee didn't show up, so we, you know, discussed it with town staff on, you know, how to blend the different options into the park as best as possible and kind of had another meeting with town staff, Public Works, the Water and Sewer Department, to see what they're gonna be liking for maintenance requirements, if there was any questions. What everyone kind of decided on was, everyone seemed to like the focal point system the best. Hold on, excuse me one second. So this is, this is the engineering plan that shows the focal point system. So you can see the water being conveyed into this level web spreader, which discharges into kind of the water quality detention center. And these boxes underneath are where you have additional detention, which then goes underground and daylights into another level web spreader prior to discharging over the bank. So based on comments from Public Works, from town staff, everyone seemed to move forward. The city of Portland has used focal points numerous occasions and have had some success with it. I think people are a little bit more familiar. Those, yeah, the handouts that I pointed, gave out, are the two different modular wetland system and the focal point system. Cost-wise, they're more or less the same. There might be a thousand dollars difference between the two, but they're more or less the same. So I think for, for the outfall component, we're just gonna be looking on, looking for your guys' approval on which system to move forward with. Getting back into the full-depth reconstruction, we also discussed with town staff, Public Works, on the existing conditions and what needs to happen to the street for longevity. You know, you could do a mill and fill and just patch it, but every couple of years, you're just gonna be doing it again, and, you know, you're just kicking the can down the road. So I think everyone's in agreement that, to do it right and for the long term, and it's, you're gonna have a better system, better road. We're recommending, recommending full-depth reconstruction. Obviously, with full-depth reconstruction, there's gonna be additional costs associated with that. So we've talked to Steve a little bit about that and figure out how the town wants to move forward with that. But it's our recommendation, and ultimately up to you to decide which way you want to move forward with.
Before you go too far, any questions so far?
Yeah.
On anything? Is, you know, you have the wetlands and the focal point. Is longevity, you know, maintenance, which is the easiest to maintain, you know? That's gonna probably be one of the bigger drivers, in my opinion. You know, something that, you know, we don't have to keep going in there every few years to do any kind of major maintenance on it or anything, so...
Right. So for the different systems... So, for the different systems, you're probably going to have to go out once a year, make sure it's still operating, make sure there's...
Clean leaves out.
Clean leaves out, exactly. Make sure the orifices are open, so you're still getting positive flow. But, really, you kind of want these systems, especially the focal point system, to kind of have a natural vegetative area.
Right.
The bio-retention systems, the plantings within it do provide their own water quality treatment within the systems. So, we don't expect there to be a lot of maintenance. If the system isn't maintained properly, like if someone isn't going out every year to clean the leaves out, and that soil media does fail, if you're not seeing water infiltrating pretty fast through the soil, and you see ponding water, that kind of thing, would tend to mean that the media is failing, and it would just have to be removed and put back into place. But, as far as regular maintenance, there really isn't too much. You're probably going to mow it twice a year, do your annual stormwater inspection to make sure there's no leaves, all the holes are still open and that kind of stuff. These systems have worked well in the past, especially adding level lip spreaders or sedimentation basins upstream of the system, so you don't get all the sediment kind of sitting on top and clogging the system. It's definitely, definitely been helpful on similar projects.
So, the bio part of this, doesn't need to be maintained much? It's just...
No. You're, we're going to work with our landscape architect, who's going to pick out the plantings, but really, it's just kind of low ground, shrubbery, which, just like any other garden, we're going to make sure, you know, something that's salt tolerable, especially if you're getting roadway runoff into it. And then, just picking the right plants to make sure they don't die. Occasionally, you might have to replace one if it's not doing well, but we don't anticipate much maintenance for that. So, back to the full-depth reconstruction. Like I said, we're going to be removing, most likely removing, the pavement and all the gravel underneath. We're going to be looking at the existing conditions of the soil below grounds, based on online mapping. It's kind of de-soil, so clay material, where I'm not sure if there's under drains in the road right now. I kind of doubt it, so...
No.
They probably paved right over the stumps when they did it originally, years ago.
Yeah, you never know what you find when you start digging things up. So, we're going to do it right. We're going to put under drains in, kind of make sure that the roadway is drained properly. That's kind of why the road is in disrepair right now, is water just sits under there, and that's when you see kind of what we call alligator cracking. And then, you know, obviously, in northern New England, frost heaving destroys roads, but, you know, we'll look at the cross-section, make sure that the gravel's thick enough, the right-sized stone is used. Some under-drain piping in conjunction with the stormwater conveyance piping that would just tie right into it and kind of outfall in the same stormwater. And as I said, the, we're going to formalize shallow roadside swales to convey the water. Right now, there's, it's generally eighteen feet wide, but there's areas that are twenty feet wide, there's areas that are fifteen feet wide, so we'd be kind of formalizing everything to eighteen feet wide, which is still narrow, but is, the right-of-way out there is super narrow, so...
Yeah, some really big trees right next to the road.
Exactly. So, eighteen feet, I mean, it's a, you know, residential area, so it's not like people are hopefully flying down this. So, eighteen feet definitely is wide enough, but we're going to be standardizing that, so it's consistent through the whole roadway system. So, we have provided some rough conceptual cost estimates for both the full-depth reconstruction and the stormwater. I'm not sure if you were getting into that tonight?
No, we have a workshop on the 23rd, so I'll give you the bad news.
Yeah. So, we'll forward that information to you.
Yeah, thank you.
The one thing that I did want to bring up, and we brought it up to Steve, and I'm sure you've seen it on other projects in the town, is everyone's coming in really high right now when you put this out to bid, so we just want to make sure, you know, our estimates are conceptual estimates, but it's likely going to be higher, so I just wanted to bring that up. And I think that's generally it. Like I said, kind of confirmation from you guys on full-depth reconstruction and which stormwater alternative to move forward with for preliminary and final design.
And, you know, we have a timeline from the federal government as far as finishing up our MS4, you know, when is that?
Not sure yet. Waiting to hear from Christie.
Yeah, so when we met with Christie, it's our understanding that as long as the plans are moving forward and we're actively working on it, it shouldn't be an issue, and we're obviously actively working on it.
That's what we did last time. We put it off several years because we kept working on it.
Yeah.
They still have Phase Two and Three to come up with the designs, wouldn't you say, if you want full depth? So, we're into 2021 by the time we really get to where it has to be done.
Yep.
If I can pull it off another year, I'm going to, you know?
Yeah. Any questions of Peter Jason? The park plan, that portion of it, you said you spoke with the highway department, because they're going to be doing maintenance and things like that, you know, so this will allow them better access down into that area, you know, now, as in what we have, you know, going down over the bank and...
Yeah, currently, it's definitely going to be better, so, I mean, we'll have access along the sidewalk, along the entire section of Molton Street, and then part of the preliminary plans, we're going to maintain connectivity to this existing trail, but also what that is also going to act as a secondary thing, is to provide some sort of access to...
To the filtration system.
Yeah, to the filtration system, in case, you know, twelve feet wide, you could put stone and then put soil on top of it, so it's structured, but they could drive a car. I've done on similar stormwater systems in the past, but we definitely want to provide access to this, especially with the steeper banks. Right now, you obviously can't drive a car down there.
Well, you'd never get it back out.
You'd never get it back out, and hopefully, wouldn't fall over the cliff, but, you know, provide some sort of access where they'd be able to get one of their maintenance trucks in there to, if it's a vacuum truck or something.
And how many, how many feet of sidewalk is this envisioning now? You showed along Molton Street, but coming down also Sawmill Hill, does that include going all the way to the corner, or...
Not as part of our scope. As part of our scope is just Molton Street. I think for the future park development phase, that would be incorporated into that.
Right, right. And how many parking spaces did you say you created?
Six.
Six?
Yep.
I know that, you know, I'd been involved in the early plans, and there was some discussion back and forth about how many, how much parking we needed there, if we needed any parking, but is...
So, we tried to maximize it. Part of the constraining factor, because we are located next to the river, we're going to be applying for a DEP permit by rule under activities adjacent to natural resources of the river. And as part of that, we need to minimize disturbance as much as possible within a seventy-five-foot buffer. So, this is the approximate top of bank, and then this line is the seventy-five-foot buffer, so we kind of brought the parking as close to that buffer as possible.
I tend to agree that, you know, the focal point, that's what this plan is showing, right? Seems to be the way we should go for, you know, mitigating the stormwater coming off.
Full-depth reconstruction.
Full-depth reconstruction. If we're going to be digging it up and putting pipes and stuff in, as I can't see...
Got to do it right.
Piecemeal it, especially like you said, in some places, that road is probably closer to sixteen feet than, you know, eighteen feet even, so...
So, you said we've got a workshop, you said we've got a workshop on this 23rd?
Twenty-third, it's going to be after our meeting, which will be a short meeting. We're going to get into the bigger-priced capital projects that we're looking at for the next few years, which, and this will be wonderful. I'll have a little bit better idea on cost, scare you with it, but it's just stuff we need to do.
Yep.
And we don't need a formal vote or anything?
I don't think so.
No?
Just...
Yeah, just formal, tell us which way.
Yeah, I definitely like the focal point.
Yeah, you know, the, I think it's between the overhead and the speaker, and his speaker and everything, so, but, yeah, the full-depth reconstruction probably be what we really need to do, even though I'm going to faint when I see a price tag.
Yes. We got to do it, we might as well do it right.
Right.
How many feet are we talking about, the whole project?
A roadway?
Yeah.
About fifteen hundred. Decent size.
That's including coming up Copeland and First, that part of...
Yeah.
Copeland and First Street, because we have to pick up all the drains coming down.
With the First Street, fifteen hundred to sixteen hundred.
Yeah.
About that.
Very good.
Thank you.
Your homework, gun, there you go.
Thanks, guys.
No, thank you. Unfinished business, we have nothing listed.
No.
Is town manager report.
Just a few things. We sent out notices for the upcoming lien process. We had four hundred and thirty notices going out. It got quite a bit of attention. By the time we sent lien, the lien notices are going out, we had two hundred and eighty-one, so we had to rush to get people to pay, which was nice.
I was wondering why it was so busy last.
Yeah.
How much of an impact was there as a result of the systems being down yesterday until mid-afternoon?
It was a real nightmare. We actually lost power, and two servers went down. So, we come in Monday morning, nothing's working. Telephones weren't working, and in fact, we got the telephones up and working, but it wasn't until around two fifteen to two thirty, two thirty, that the servers are up and running, right? So, staff had a, it was a real nightmare for everybody, and you forget how much we rely on the internet for what we do and things like that, so, but they, we have good staff, and they hung in there, and they got it all done, as they always do, so hats off to them. We had a union negotiation meeting this morning. I thought that went fairly well, and I think we're close to getting all the articles that we were looking to, and they were looking to get updated, which we haven't done that. We just have to finalize on wages, and I'll give you a little bit of insight, we haven't formalized, they haven't made a commitment to anything yet on that, so, but it went well. Just for the public's notice, we'll be doing roads, paving, the third week of July, they'll start with finishing up Wentworth Travel there, as well as Logan, and then probably the first week of August, we'll be tearing up Pine Hill and Worcester Road, which we will have more information on that as it proceeds, to give people heads up of detours, and it will jam up the traffic a little bit, but it's going to be a good project to get done.
So, we're going up Pine Hill into Worcester?
No, we're going up to the top of Pine Hill where the tank is, the standpipe. That's, they wanted to go further, but we really don't have the funding for that, so we're just, we had planned to do Pine Hill in sections to begin with, not to eat up all the money on one road. So, once they get Pine Hill done, they'll go over to Worcester, and they'll grind that, they'll probably grind them all at the same time, and then they'll have to, all the ditches, my public works has been working on that, everybody that I'm sure has seen them, they have to get grass seeded and stuff like that, but they're pretty well-done with culvert replacements and things. They did some prior year, anticipating that we would be doing that road in the next few years.
Are they doing all of Worcester at once?
We'll do all of Worcester at once. That won't take long to grind, because it's only held together by patch, most of it, so it's pretty bad shit. And the crew will get over there to do some ditching before that gets all done. And we will be doing that parking lot, we're just waiting for another price, the employee parking lot. That was part of the downtown project that was first talked about with the traffic study, and we have, getting two prices. We're just waiting for that, and that will be taken care of and all striped. We're going to gain, I think, fifteen parking areas, spots, which would be really good. There's this notice on the DCTV and also on our webpage about the Hubbard Road Bridge. Last year, they were in for a public hearing, nobody showed up except the selectmen, they wanted to know if they needed to come back, and I said, I didn't think so. We'll put it up on what people view it the most, which is DCTV in our webpage. So, it's, they'll be going out to bid. I don't believe the project will start until the spring of twenty, but we'll see. Otherwise, that's all I have for now.
I have no selectman communications, and accounts payable. I have an account payable warrant, one nine five one, from June twentieth, two thousand nineteen, the amount of one hundred sixty-eight thousand, eight hundred fifty-one dollars and eight cents. A water warrant, zero nine five one, from June twentieth, two thousand nineteen, the amount of two hundred twenty-four dollars and six cents. Payroll warrant, one nine five one, from June twentieth, two thousand nineteen, for sixty-three thousand, three hundred eighty dollars and seven cents. Account payable warrant, one nine five two, from June twenty-seventh, two thousand nineteen, for the amount of fifty-eight thousand, nine hundred thirty-five dollars and nineteen cents. A water warrant, zero nine five two, from June twenty-seventh, two thousand nineteen, for the amount of two thousand, seven hundred eleven dollars, nine cents. Payroll warrant, number one nine five two, from June twenty-seventh, two thousand nineteen, for the amount of fifty-nine thousand, two hundred twelve dollars and eighty-two cents. Account payable warrant, one nine five three, from June twenty-eighth, two thousand nineteen, for the amount of seventeen thousand, five hundred forty-eight dollars and forty-two cents. Account payable warrant, one nine five four, from June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen, for the amount of one hundred twenty thousand, four hundred thirty-one dollars and three cents. Water warrant, one nine five three, from June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen, for forty-nine dollars and sixteen cents. I like those kind of bills. Payroll warrant, two thousand one, for January, July third, two thousand nineteen, the amount of seventy-three thousand, seventy-eight dollars and eighty-four cents. Account payable warrant, two thousand and one, from July third, two thousand nineteen, for the amount of ninety-seven thousand, eight hundred sixty-six dollars and nine cents. Now, make the motion to pay our bills.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Brings us to our new business, Mr. Paul McKinney here, our assessor, on preliminary values.
Yeah, good evening, everybody. We've been working on the revaluation for the last eight or ten months or so, and adjusting tables and going out and measuring all the sale properties. So, we measured all the sales in town that were qualified sales from April first of two thousand seventeen through March thirty-first of two thousand nineteen. Those that we didn't get into, we did send notices out to do callbacks. We went out and did those to the people that did respond, and we'll probably pick up a few more during the, you know, the... and we'll probably pick up a few more during the, you know, the preliminary hearing, so. So as a result of the revale, the overall value is going up by seventy-six million, seven hundred and eighty-five thousand, four hundred, which is approximately eleven percent. And that's a reason, and we base that on the two hundred and ninety-three sales that occurred during that timeframe. Residential values, on an average, are going up about eight percent. Manufactured homes, two percent. Condominiums, fourteen percent. Vacant land, seventeen percent, and commercial, twenty-four percent. One thing I would like to make a note to the public is that don't, when you get this notice of your new value, don't apply the current year's tax rate, because the tax rate will be adjusted according to the new town's value at the time of commitment. So I don't want everyone out there to get nervous and say, oh, my tax, my bill's taxes are going up eleven percent. That is not necessarily the case. It all depends on what the, the final values are. So as a, as a result of that, we are, the median assessment to sale ratio, which is the, where the assessments are compared to what the market value is, is gonna be around ninety-seven point nine, ninety-eight percent. Over that two-year period, the International Association of Assessing Offices guidelines are between ninety and a hundred and ten. That's also, you know, for the main criteria as well. So the coefficient of dispersion, which is our quality rating, that's the distance from the median, our, our sales met. We're at eight point two-three for the two-year period, and then seven point nine-three for the, for a one-year period. The guidelines say we should be below twenty, so I usually try to get below ten. If you go any lower than, you know, seven or eight percent, then you start chasing sales, and that's unlawful, and they kinda frown upon that, so. The eight point two-three is, means that all the sale, all the properties should be fairly, you know, fairly equitable, based on the sales that we inspected. The PRD is the price-related differential, and that's the measurement that we use to differentiate the low-end homes from the high-end priced homes. The guideline is between point nine eight and one point oh-three. We're exactly at one, which is saying that I'm not valuing mobile homes any more than the, you know, the three or four hundred thousand dollar homes. My plan is to get preliminary notices out this week, towards the end of the week. We'll take calls in our office. They'll have the opportunity to either call and make an appointment in, you know, by phone. They can go on a website. The website will give, they can schedule their own appointment. Or they can, you know, they can call and we can set up a phone hearing where people, if they can't make the in-person appointment, we'll be able to communicate by phone, or they also have the opportunity to send in a letter or some information if they'd like us, you know, to consider their value. We'll hold the hearings, informal hearings, will be held probably upstairs in the town hall from July twenty-second through August second. I'm gonna do Monday, Wednesday, and possibly Friday in the morning. I can do a later evening so that the people that work during, later during the day, I can probably stay till six or, you know, six o'clock or something some nights, and make sure we get some of those people. Certainly won't turn anyone away. If somebody's got a question, you know, by all means, we'll make arrangements to, you know, take care of them and talk to them. So I guess what I'm looking for tonight is a, just permission, I guess, or an acceptance of these values? And I said, I'll get the notices out this week, and we'll just move forward.
Any questions to call?
Any questions or anything, or?
This is related to the going out and inspecting people's homes and judging the values and making sure that, yeah, everything is as it should be compared to what the town records are and stuff like that, or?
Yes, and it's also to adjust the, the tables that are in the database and the CAMA system, the computer-assisted mass appraisal database, to current market rates. So we, we look at all those sales, we take them, those sales, and we break them down into different, you know, the building size, the style of the home, the lot size, the neighborhood that it's in. We take that information, and that's where we kind of adjust the tables according to what the sales tell us.
How often do you do this?
The town, the state requires that you do it every ten years, or when the assessment to sale ratio falls below seventy percent. So our assessment ratio wasn't too bad. It was probably in the low nineties. But there were a lot of different sectors or different types of property that got out of, you know, out of whack over the last, I believe it was been like thirteen years since we've done a, you know, reevaluation. So, but the value is that overall, it hasn't been that bad. The market's gone up, and it's, it's come down, but it's also, then it's gone back up. So, I mean, we're not really, some of the towns that I'm doing right now in New Hampshire that I do every five years went up twenty-five or thirty percent. So that's, that's a pretty steep jump for, you know, taxpayers to see.
So these hearings are for people that might want to argue that their property isn't worth as much as you're now claiming it is?
That's right. Yeah, we'll send them a letter, giving them the old value, the old assessed value, what they were assessed at last year, and then we'll give them the value that we're proposing for this year's value. And if they have a question of how we did the, you know, the process, or maybe we have some information on their property that wasn't accurate, they wanna correct. They may have an appraisal that they did from refinancing, or just bought the property or whatever, that they want us to take a look at. So this allows the public to kind of participate in the, in the reevaluation.
So over the last two years, you've been looking at, you know, the sales and things, is, just for my own interest, is, you know, new sales, are we seeing more of the big McMansion-type homes, or the smaller homes nowadays?
I think the, I mean, what I've been seeing on the new homes are probably in the low to mid-three hundred ranges. Land value has gone up probably quite a bit.
Yeah.
You know, so that went up to seventeen percent, so. We don't only use vacant land sales, we take the sale property and we extract the building's value that's on that property, and what's left is the land value. So we look at that land value across the town, and it'll show you that the land over on certain areas of town sells for more or less. So that's how we adjust our tables to, to account for that. So usually the main roads are probably a little less desirable than a, than a cul-de-sac or, you know, subdivision, or.
Or cemetery road or swig road.
Yeah, 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 I mean, two thirty-six, you're probably gonna have a lower land value than if you're out on, you know, some of the little subdivisions that are out there, so. We use a neighborhood code to differentiate the value, so there's a factor that's applied to those properties. And the revale process makes sure that we're consistent when we do that.
So my neighbors should thank me for all the junk in my yard for dragging down their property values, then, right?
That's right.
And I, I just wanna make it known to the public that if you have questions about your valuation, you can come in at any time, and look at your card and talk to the assessors.
Exactly. And it's online also. If you go to that VGSI dot com, VisionGovernmentSolutions dot com. You can look at your value there. I'll make sure that the, the new values are updated as well, so they'll be able to go and look. And they'll be, I'll print books of everybody's value by street, by name, and by map and lot number. So if somebody has a question, they can come in and look at what, you know, the values on their street, or their area, or their neighbors, or whatever, so that they can, you know, make sure that if the homes are similar, they're similarly priced.
Any further questions to comment?
No.
As far as I'm concerned, is I think you've done a good job, and all the numbers all seem to be coming right in the middle of the road and everything, so I say, you know, continue on.
Okay, all right.
Yes.
Very good. Thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
The state will see weeks. Anna Branding.
Well, for those who weren't at the workshop, I'm not sure who was. She gave a presentation with, with the planning board and Envision Burwick.
Oh, that's right, yes.
On branding, and James did a real nice lead into it. Everybody absolutely loved what you did, so.
Made me go and change my branding.
I have whole new branding on my website, just because of you.
Okay, she just say that, now she's gonna send you a bill.
I asked her to do it, I was consulting.
Tonight, the board needs to vote to accept the brand that they saw, that everybody was.
The logo and everything.
The logo and everything, yep.
Okay. Yeah?
Well, I'll, I'll make a motion to move ahead with the new branding for the town, as, as shown to us, and is, I look forward to being able to buy some new merchandise soon.
I second that motion.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Nice job.
Now, do we get to see this sweatshirt?
Well, the plan is to roll it out at the.
The concert.
First concert, so we're, which is gonna be the third, so we're gonna have some graphics printed up. So we're basically waiting for tonight to get the stamp with approval, so we can go have stickers and nice things like that, so.
Pretty awesome.
Yeah.
It'll be fun.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, next is the estate of Emily Rep Easement deed.
I will.
This is complicated and confusing.
I know, I read it.
I've read through it three times, and I still don't understand it, so.
I'll, I'll give a little bit further background and history. This is up on Logan Street. Is, up until recently, Logan Street was actually three different streets. It was Logan, Highland, and Winslow, yeah, Winslow. We changed it all to Logan for the, the nine-one-one, E-nine-one-one thing. But there are two areas where there were proposed extensions of Highland Street and Logan Street that never took place. The town has, legally has the right of way, is my understanding, for both areas. But is when the Dobson Woods project was being proposed. Originally, they were gonna be putting, I think, two apartment buildings out back there. When that was being proposed, is they were gonna use that portion of Logan, which is old Highland Street, as an emergency access, and at the planning board, there was quite a bit of pushback from the people in that area that, you know, at that time, they were saying that the town had lost all our rights to it, but we never gave them up.
In what year was this?
That was, oh, probably close to fifteen years ago now, I believe. And then with Envision Burwick came on board and started getting going, and we did the trail committee, and they put the, the, what was called the Penny Pond Trail through there, and the trail committee was talking about, you know, using those right-of-ways, and again, we got a lot of pushback from the people that live in that area, that they didn't want the public in that area. But the town never gave up our right of way.
That's right.
So the town still owns them, as far as we are legally concerned, I believe.
That's my take on it.
Yeah. So is because of the, the confusion, the haze, everything, is the, the estate of the Emily Rep is looking for us to, basically just say that they have a right of way, access to a town right of way, is what I understand.
Yes. Can I feed more into that?
Yeah. Go right ahead.
The way, the way the deed is written, and what you're, if you're gonna sign tonight, they have an easement to come in and out of that road, to come, get off Logan, to go up the old Highland Street, and then also to exit. But what I have heard and seen is they, that easement is also you had been used as a parking.
Right.
For them, which that's not the, my take, is it's not the intent of the easement. It's not their property. They have the right to cross back and forth. So I've been emailing back and forth with our attorneys, and even they were a bit confused. And there's not a lot of documentation at the registry, so. But I think it's clear that it was supposed to be used for an easement. And I think if you don't mind waiting until I hear from our attorney, that I wanna make sure that that's clear in, in the deed, it is only an easement. It does not give them the authority to use it as a driver, you know, parking lot for their cars, because that will end any conflict if anybody wants to go up to the trail to Penny Pond. And, and the reason that didn't get developed out there, one of the reasons, is because it's wetlands. And the DEP, there's a covenant that goes with this, that deed for that property. That, you know, to change any of that, they have to go see the, we would have to go to the DEP. So I think it would be best for us to get clarity.
A little bit more legally, legal clarity?
Yeah, I, I really think it's in our best interest down the road to do that, but that's up to you. If you are comfortable with what you're reading, you can vote and sign it.
Is, you know, I, I would prefer to have, you know, the okay from our legal team, you know, before we do anything, you know, because it's gonna be a permanent thing once we sign it, and I just wanna make sure. And the, the, you talk about the wetlands, is one of the reasons they didn't put the two apartment buildings back there is because they would have had to build a bridge over the stream, and that was cost prohibitive for them. And so that's when they went to just the houses, and then deeded the rest of the property over to the town, you know, for the Penny Pond area.
So just to be clear, this is vacant, this is just vacant land, right?
Well, if you go out to Logan.
Yeah, there's, there's the curve.
And where the bend is.
Yeah.
There's a paved driveway, it looks like a driveway.
Right, that's what it's been used as for decades.
Yeah, that is the old Highland Street.
Yeah.
Okay, but there is a house there, but there is, nobody could build beyond that. I think the house was there for a while.
Yeah, it's been there quite a while.
Well, since the person who owned it died thirty years ago, I would assume it's been there for quite a while.
Yeah.
So it's, it has been some pushback, from what I've heard. I haven't experienced it, but.
Yeah, you know, like I said, is when, when the town looked at, the trail committee was talking about, you know, the Penny Pond Trail coming through there, is quite a few people in there, you know, with all those houses involved in there, came down saying that they didn't want, you know, the public in there, and.
Ron Vigu was the attorney that did that, and I really wanna reach out to him and get a little bit more clarity, if you can recall with that. Just from his perspective. I did get an email from him that said, the ball's in my court, so.
Well, I don't think there's any rush, so I think we can wait two weeks on it.
I think the, Susan Tebow, I think she has a buyer for the property, but I think we need to make sure our docs are all drawn.
Yeah.
It's my advice.
Especially with other people already being, considering it a hot-button issue.
Right.
Wouldn't want to rush it.
Yeah, and we need to make sure the documents are correct, too.
Yeah.
Because they've got Noah for signature, but they've got Rebecca twice, and.
So impact fees, this is something that I have talked about before. Is the way the impact fees are set up now is that the land, the money is taken in with building permits, and it's split between recreational money and open land money. And is, you know, my recommendation is to change that formula and take some of the money to put into infrastructure, such as sidewalks, street improvements, things like that. I don't have a formula of where we wanna break it down yet.
Well, you have quite a bit of money in both recreation and.
It doesn't take a lot of time to spend that money either.
No, it won't. So I think we need to consider how you, what you wanted to do with the open space funding.
Right.
You know, do you wanna just dump that into recreation? Or do you wanna keep it and just change the name?
Well, it is one of the, one of the things, one of the things I was thinking is, you know, is possibly, you know, doing a three-way split, you know, and putting fifty percent of the money into infrastructure, and then, you know, the rest of the money back into recreation and open space.
Existing one.
Yeah, is, is, you know, because. Yeah, is, you know, because, is, you know, one of the things, you know, with Envision Burwick and the Comprehensive Plan, is, you know, looking at acquiring more land in Burwick.
Yeah.
And...
Recreation Master Plan.
And, you know, one of the things that we've done in the past is working in conjunction with Great Works Land Trust, is, you know, they have opportunities sometimes to buy land, and they come to the town, you know, asking for like $10,000 or something, you know, for that, for a portion of it. And we've used money like that before, not of impact fees, but, you know, we have voted to do that, so...
I know that there's some opportunities coming to purchase land next to Memorial Field, and I think that's in the Recreation Master Plan.
Right.
I'd like to recommend that we take advantage of that, so we have more field space and parking, and so...
How much money is in recreation right now?
Last time I checked, it was $58,000, I think, in each. So it gets collected pretty quick, but also, we have to remember, just with your signal, we have to spend, from the time we started, we get the impact fees, say, from one big project. We have 10 years to spend that funding, or it goes back to the people who paid the impact fees. So we have to be cognizant of the fact of the timing of it.
Right, and we've had it in place, what, four...
Three years.
Three years now?
Two or three years.
Yeah, so...
I think we did that when John was still here.
Yeah, yeah.
So it's been three years, probably.
Well, there's something else that, you know, is not an immediate thing, is, you know, we get some more figures...
I'll get, I'll get exact numbers, and I'll ask, there's some documents I have to look at about how the funding can be spent.
Right. Has to be for, for improvements that have come about because of the growth in the town. It can't be to fund existing programs.
Yeah. So some of the sidewalks that we have, like in front of the town office, I'm not sure we can spend it on.
No, we probably not there.
But if we do new sidewalks, which we plan on doing...
Right, and since half of the sidewalks, I don't consider real sidewalks, they're just, they're extensions of the shoulder.
And we have some application, you know, grant applications that we're gonna be looking at, we'll have some matching funds, so we could use that as well.
Right.
For new sidewalks and projects like that. So I'll get that information for the 23rd, so we have real clarity on how we can do that.
You're talking about the information on how we can spend the money?
Right. And also, just to make sure how you, what, on the open space fees, how we need to handle that, 'cause that's not clear yet, so...
And so, conditional use application fee.
James and the code enforcement officer did a little research, looked about what other towns are charging, and they felt that we need to be competitive, so they have asked you to vote, which board of select has the authority to vote, change the fees.
I talked to James a little bit about this also. You know, the application fee now is $200, and is, if you're in the Village Overlay District, it's five, was, is 500. But then there's noticing and mailing costs are extra and due before the public hearing. And James is telling me that, you know, that the $200 is, it's $125 just to place an ad in the Fosters, which is legally required. And then the mailing and all the other things adds up to over $200. And so what happens is, you know, people check that box, say, and the $200, but then they get the notice that they have a more, another bill. And he said that the $500 more closely reflects the actual costs that we incur, you know, because that also includes Lee J. looking at it and, and things like that, you know. And that's one of the things, you know, since, actually, before I came on board again, is we've, been really pushing, is to make these departments pay for themselves, more or less, you know, so that the, the average taxpayer isn't subsidizing the development costs, you know, and things like that, so...
When was the last time we increased it?
I, hasn't been changed since I've been here.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know.
Must've been a while back. James said there was a pretty big difference in the communities, what they're charging. And as you can see on, if Lee J. has to spend more than 10 hours, it's 80 bucks an hour, shouldn't be coming out of taxpayer, as Tom said, so...
Yeah, I think we talked about this briefly at the workshop, didn't we?
Yeah, we did.
Yeah.
So... I'll make a motion that we accept the new conditional use fees as presented by the planning board, $500 for conditional use and $1,000 for site plan review.
I second that motion.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Seeing how I'm gonna be going for a conditional use permit here, I should've done it earlier, huh?
Yeah.
Can we make it $1,000?
Uh-huh. All right. Is, we have no quick claim deeds, no abatements. Second public comment, is the only public comment, is Linda, and I think she said her piece.
My little question is...
We do have an executive session, and before we get to that, under the other business non- gender items, I just wanna mention, Steve and I met with people from Affinity Lighting again today, is doing the LED replacement lights, is, is... The cost of replacing all the streetlights in town is approximately $90,000 to $100,000. But the electricity savings is around $30,000 a year. So the payback would be in just over three years, and then would be, you know, saving money every, every year. We also asked them to come and look at all of the town buildings, the town hall, the police department, Public Works, the water department, things like that. And they're gonna be coming back and doing a tour and looking at the, the lights in all the buildings. They just finished the project in, for the Rochester School District, is, they replaced over 6,000 light fixtures in nine buildings, and said that they're going to be seeing probably a 75% reduction in their energy costs, you know, so is, every penny we can squeeze out of here, you know, is I think that the money well spent, is, we would have to go to the voters for, to get the money to do this, probably in November, is we're hoping to get something on the ballot by then. And, but I think that it's something that we really need to look at and really do, is...
What they told us today, that some towns actually go to the bank and get a short-term loan, so with the savings, you pay it off in three years with the savings that you have, which makes very much sense. So you don't have to borrow, you know, get the money out of...
Yeah, not, don't have to go through the bond bank or anything like that, you know, and get competitive rates. So, is, and they're gonna get back to us, and, you know, as we told them that we need to get something together so that we can get something on the ballot in November, so is, that's something that we'll be looking at in the next couple of weeks.
Yep.
So...
It'd be nice to get it all done, 'cause the savings would be huge for us.
Yeah.
We have over 200 streetlights, so if they find more, they said, the cost doesn't change. Which I like that. But we have to put it out to bid, or get comparative prices.
Yeah.
This particular company is right over in Dover. What I like about them is they, they hire vets and they build all the lights themselves.
They build everything right in Dover, they're all, you know, and they, they use, you know, only, only the highest quality parts, you know, for the LEDs and the things, and...
Been catered to. We've had other companies, one from Texas, which has been out to do the same thing. It's a way.
Yeah. So, yeah, I think, I think it's something that, you know, will really help the town a lot, and is one of the things, he said, some of the towns are doing, such as Augusta, is they're taking, after everything's paid off, they're taking the money that they save in the electricity and keeping a portion of that in a fund to do energy efficiency upgrades on other buildings and things, you know, so, you know, that gives us money that we can fall back on, you know, to, you know, insulation and...
Solar panels and...
Yeah.
Place the pipes.
Pipes, yes. So we have heat, so...
Who needs heat?
Anything else for general consumption before we go into the executive session?
Nope.
Is, and the executive session is just a discussion, there will be no votes taken. So is, under Table 1, Subsection 405, 6A, Discussion of Personnel, I will move that we go into an executive session.
A second.
All those in favor? Thank you.
Thank you.